Are there any additions to those minutes by, from anyone? Yes, Nancy?
I wasn't here, but I think there's just a typo. If Chair Staunton was not present, I don't think he addressed us under community comment.
That's probably a good assumption.
Yeah.
Any other changes? Would I take a motion for approval of the meeting minutes?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So next up is the community comment. During the community comment, anyone can come forth and speak, speak on an item. We ask that if there's something to be said, it's not something on the agenda later tonight, there'll be a time for that also. But if you have anything to come forward, you get three minutes. If you can come to the speaker, give us your name and what you want to go through. Anyone here? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Grootz, and I have been a resident at 5513 Park Place since 1979. It was suggested I present information on our city permitting process that I presented at the last city council meeting. I have come to realize, most members of this commission are from the commercial side of the business. Commissioners must understand, one cannot use commercial processes and standards to apply to residential, because that level of oversight is simply not happening. There are commercial place, marketplace competitors and others seeking to delay or stop commercial construction. This is not found on the residential side. This lack of oversight allows builders to duck additional required permits, which are prerequisites on the commercial side, example, Minnehaha Creek watershed district permits. This is our Edina permit application for the commercial side, and it's a checklist. It's a formal checklist. And there's items on here which are required to have in hand before you apply for a commercial permit. And, for example, item number four is watershed district permit. Yes, you have to have it before you can apply for a commercial permit. On the residential side, there is no residential checklist, and there are no such prerequisites that must be met before you can apply for a city residential permit. At the last council meeting, Carrie Teague stated there were about 200 residential tear downs or substantial remodels per year now in Edina. The regulatory officer from Minnehaha Creek watershed district stated to me the week before, there were only 20-something open watershed permits, including commercial permits. The threshold requirement for a residential watershed permit is triggered by the 50 cubic yard rule. A typical 150 to 200 square foot addition with basement would cross that threshold. Every tear down at virtually every substantial remodel here in Edina requires a watershed permit. It appears residential builders have ducked the permit because they do not wish to be subject to the much higher requirements of the watershed district permit, including higher requirements for erosion controls, trees, and vegetation. The district requirement for erosion controls alone is seven pages long, and it requires a standalone plan for erosion controls. I suggested to the council, a uniform permitting process be created, that would be the same for both commercial and residential, and have a checklist, with prerequisites similar to commercial permitting. I would also suggest this commission set up a joint, open work session with the Edina Energy and Environment Commission, and ask the watershed district regulatory officers to go through their complete list of permit requirements at such work session. I would also suggest builders, city staff, and council members be invited to attend such work session. Given these facts, there is considerable room for improvement here in Edina. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community comments? You got a motion to close the community comment section?
So moved.
Seconds?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against? Anyone? Looks like it carries. So next up are the public hearings. There's two public hearings on the agenda tonight. One is for a variance of a fence. Another one is a zoning ordinance amendment update to the Edina PUD discussion. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. The request is for a two-foot height variance from our fence height requirement, and the property is located at 5528 Woodcrest Drive. It says highlighted, it's on the corner of Woodcrest Drive, just north of West 56th Street. You'll notice that the property backs up to two lots that are along Park Place. Here is an aerial photograph of the subject property. It's a Rambler with an attached garage. You'll notice in the backyard, there is an in-ground swimming pool, which is very close to the rear lot line. It's actually non-conforming. It's about five feet away from that rear lot line. Our current code would require that the pool be 14 feet away from the lot line to the pool's edge, and another 10 feet from the required decking. You'll notice also that, to the west, there's a vacant lot that's no longer vacant. There's a house there. Some of your commission members were here and heard a conditional use permit request for that property, to allow the new home to have a first floor higher than one foot above what's there right now. That's what our current requirement is. They needed the conditional use permit because the property was, is in the flood zone, and they needed to elevate their basement, so then the first floor gets elevated as well. And what that did was, it did change the terrain of the property. The property in the backyard was raised about three feet. If you were out there, you'll notice that the property to the west has a retaining wall that runs the length of their easterly property line, which is also abutting the neighbor's westerly property line. So there's about a, at least a three-foot difference in most places between the property to the west and the subject property that hadn't been there previously. Here is a photograph of the existing home, the subject property. This is a snapshot of the common rear lot line between the subject property and the property to the west. The area highlighted in red is where the property owner would like to have an eight-foot fence. We do allow up to a six-foot fence in the side and rear yard, and they would just want it along the length of the portion of the backyard that's adjacent to the property that's been elevated, that's near the swimming pool. This is really basically the same snapshot, but it, and highlighted, it's showing that this property has been elevated three feet higher. The subject property is three feet lower, and the fence needs replacement, so they've decided that, at this point, instead of trying to replace it with a six-foot fence, they would like to have a section of it that would be eight feet along the edge of the pool that's adjacent to the new home, because, you can see on these photos, the existing fence is five feet in height, and you can't really tell from this photograph, but the grade has been raised substantially on the neighboring properties, so that this five-foot fence is actually about two feet on their side. You can kind of see it from this photograph. It's demonstrated with this gentleman who's standing on the neighbor's property, and the subject five-foot fence is about up to his knees. They would like to replace it with a scalloped solid board fence, similar to what's there right now. It would be professionally installed. It would only be that section next to the swimming pool, that would be taller than six feet. There was a memo that was included in your packet that is from our health department, and the health official, who is also our pool inspector, is in support of the proposal and does recommend approval. The health inspector indicated that the owner effectively illustrates how the elevation of the adjoining property has resulted in the existing five-foot tall fence to be two feet tall on the neighbor's side of the fence. The Edina City Code in the health department, for enclosures on swimming pools, requires a minimum four-foot tall, non-climbable fence with a self-closing gate. So, they would be only two feet on that side. The health officer did indicate that the fence would be legal if they wanted to even just put a four-foot fence on the subject property, but it really wouldn't offer the protection that is necessary. And she does add that additionally, the Center for Disease Control reports on childhood injury in 2000, 2006 lists drowning as the second leading cause of death for children between one and 14 years of age. And so the subject homeowner's proposal to increase the fence height from five to eight feet in order to limit the potential for entry to the pool and/or unintended injuries is in keeping with the intent of the Edina City Health Code. With that, I do believe that it's a reasonable request that the property owner is coming forward with. They are not intending to enclose the entire property within eight-foot fence, only that area that is adjacent to the pool. I also indicated in the planning report that a number of years ago, and I'm not sure how many number of years ago, eight-foot fences were the limit in height. So there are plenty of them in town. You do see them still, and those can be repaired and maintained, so it's not unusual to see an eight-foot fence, although this will only be just a section. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chris? Yes, Commissioner Shear.
I clearly see it as a safety issue, and the problem was really created by our granting of the conditional use permit. So it's easy for me to see that I would approve this. My question actually is whether, from a safety perspective, we should go further. If you look at one of the, I don't know if you can pull it back up on the screen, Ms. Akabat, eight feet along the edge of the pool, isn't the, if I look at it correctly, is not the entire length of the westerly property that was raised. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's just going to be next to the pool area, and then the rest of it will be at six feet. So, it will protect the pool. I mean, it's very close. I mean, you could easily probably just
I mean, frankly, I was wondering if it, if the idea of these fences is to keep someone from being able to leap over and use a water feature inappropriately, I wondered if the eight-foot should extend further, from a safety perspective?
The health officer didn't comment any further on that. The level of protection was apparently enough for that. So, and the applicant is just requesting that section of it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Akar? Would the applicant care to make a statement? Yes, if you come forward to the microphone here, give your, give your name, address.
I'm Tom Ry, 5520 Woodcrest Drive, and we've lived in Edina for 36 years. We lived in this house for 12 years. And Chris did a great job. Thank you, Chris, for presenting basically the issue. And the intent, actually, Nancy, is to extend. The other neighbor has a six-foot fence, and we've spoken to the fence company, and it would be extended, that entire length of the enclosure. The pool is enclosed within our yard, so that entire side, except out by the street. This fence is basically not even visible from the street.
So their six-foot fence goes six feet up from their raised?
Yes, and their lot has not been raised. So it's just the one lot that's the problem.
Feels inadequate from a safety perspective.
And in fact, the neighbors on the next lot, which is at 5537, they have three small children, and they're in complete agreement with this request.
Great. It was just a safety question from my perspective. Thank you very much.
So I think that that's about all I have to say, but I appreciate your consideration. Thank you. And thank you, Chris Akar.
Great, thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone has, wants to speak on this, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes. It'll be green, and then yellow, and then red, and then you're done. Yes?
I'm Lori Grootz, and I live at 5513 Park Place, and I live in the neighborhood where Mr. Ry lives. And I've lived there long enough to see what the property looked like before it was elevated, and I do support that. I think it would have been better yet if the homeowner that built the new house had put up a tall fence to help for their children. But yes, I do support his variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Would I take a, entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
The public hearing is closed. I'll take it back up here for discussion amongst the commission.
I'd just like to make one comment. I just thought it was very well documented, very clear. Every possible question I would have about it was addressed, so I thought it was a very, very good way of documenting it, and feel that it's justified, so.
Am I hearing a motion out of that?
I would move that we, is this asking for a variance, I guess, is what we're?
It's a variance for the two-foot fence height.
For the fence height. I move that we accept that variance for the two-foot fence height.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, given and approved, and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Thank you. Enjoy your fence building. I sure hope you can use your pool this year. Kind of getting off to a, not a good start again. So next up, Planner Teague will be presenting a zoning ordinance amendment. This has to do with the PUD in Edina, and how that relates to residential. Case on this is specific to the applicability to our PUD, and Carrie, if you could take us through it, that'd be great.
I will certainly. Thank you, Chair Plantedor, members of the commission. Current regulations in Edina prohibit properties that are zoned R1, R2, and PRD-1, that's our low-density residential zoning districts, from being considered for a PUD rezoning, a planned unit development rezoning. For the, for those planning commissioners that were here, and those who were not, the planning commission had a lot of discussion around this topic when the PUD ordinance was created about, oh, four or five years ago, as to whether R1 properties should be considered in the PUD ordinance. What's shown on the screen here is our zoning map. All of the area that's shown in white, that's our property that's zoned R1. The PUD was a new concept at that time for Edina. We wanted to take baby steps in moving it forward. So the conclusion at that time was, let's not impact all of Edina with the PUD ordinance, and just allow it to be within our commercial zone properties or high-density residential, industrial, or office properties. So that ordinance was enacted. The ordinance that's before the planning commission takes another small step in allowing some R1 properties to be considered, or low-density properties to be considered for a PUD. The language that's proposed is on the screen here. "Property currently zoned R1, R2, and PRD-1 shall not be eligible for a PUD," that's the current language, "and we would add, unless it constitutes less than 50% of the total property proposed in a PUD ordinance." So what that would look like would be on the screen here. This is the zoning map again, and I've highlighted on there, properties that abut commercial, high-density residential properties. So you can see that on the white is property that still would not be impacted by this ordinance amendment. So what I'll do is, I'll take you around the city and highlight some of those commercial properties that would be, that would be impacted, or the residential property near the commercial property. And keep in mind, while it's highlighted as impacted sites, the ordinance in no way, shape, or form rezones those properties to PUD. That's still an individual decision that would happen on a case-by-case basis. It just, this ordinance would simply allow it to be considered for a PUD. So first up in Morningside, this is the commercial zoning district, and the areas that are highlighted in orange and outlined in blue would be potential properties that could be attached to a PUD. We didn't do any analysis about the specific properties, whether they're wetlands, things like that. It's just basically showing properties that abut those commercial areas. This is the 50th and France area. On 49th, we've got that row of single-family homes and duplexes that abut the commercial property. Also, to the south, on 51st, we have a few single-family homes that could be brought into a PUD as well. This is the Grandview District. We've got a row of duplexes and single-family homes that abut high-density residential properties on each side. We've also got a row of single-family homes that abut commercial property north of Vernon. This is the area along Highway 169. We've got some high-density apartments along there, where we have single-family homes and duplexes that abut that property. The same down in this location, again, adjacent to 169, properties that abut high-density residential. We have a small area in the 70th and Cahill area in our industrial park, that potentially some properties could be considered there. 54th and France, in that small little commercial node, we have some single-family homes that abut that commercial property. In the Southdale area, this is France Avenue, so on the west side of France, where we have the apartment complexes, we have some duplexes along there that could be considered. Along Xerxes, we have some duplexes, and again, single-family homes, that could be considered for PUD. And then lastly, the Valley View and Wooddale area, where we have commercial and high-density residential, there are some single-family properties that could be considered in that location. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission make a recommendation for approval on the ordinance for the city council to consider at their meeting on May 20th. A public hearing is scheduled there as well. So with that, I can stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Shear?
I'm thinking long-term, and trying to understand long-term implications for this. If we looked at any one of those examples, Carrie, that you just put before us, if there were a developer, I know there are only in one of those is there currently a developer looking at it, but if there were, for another one of those, let's just pick 54th and, or Valley View and Wooddale, that's fine. If there were a developer that developed one of those, if this were enacted, and we approved a PUD for someone to redevelop an area and incorporate some of the orange area that I see there, and that development occurred, this is now part of our operating code going forward. It seems to me that it can be a self-fulfilling prophecy, as far as continuing to sort of smudge into current R1 neighborhoods. If there was a redevelopment following the first development, or some addition to the development, you could claim again, that you could take another ring of homes under this guideline, less, you know, unless it constitutes less than 50% of the proposed development. And you could have commercial property that sort of starts meandering into what has previously been R1 property. Is that a correct or a fair assumption?
That's correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question for now.
Any other questions for Carrie? Commissioner Forrest?
I too am concerned about commercial creep into residential areas. Fully understanding the need to be open to increased density in certain areas sometimes too, but I was wondering, because the other part of the ordinance says provided they would be allowable on the site under the comprehensive plan. So how limiting would that be if it isn't an area, if the residential properties are not zoned for potential growth?
Yeah, that would have to be taken into consideration, the comprehensive plan as well. Keep in mind, however, that this doesn't obligate the city to approve a PUD. You know, we're still looking at those on an individual basis, and if we're feeling that there's too much commercial creep going out, city can always say no to a rezoning for PUD.
Any other comments? Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, I think this came about as a result of us looking at the Lennar proposal. The 50% is still a question in my mind. Could you explain again how that percentage arrived, and what is the logic behind the 30% versus a 25% or 75%?
Yeah, there was no scientific study done on the 50%. We just knew that we wanted it to be a minority of a proposed PUD. So that's where I, the 50% is suggested. But if the commission would like to recommend something lower than that, 30%, something in that range, you could certainly do that.
Okay, and then as part of our packet, I didn't see you put it up here, but you had the original, I think it was five residential properties that were becoming part of that. Now, again, it has been quoted as being less than 25%, but I gotta look at that, just looking at it, it seems to me that it's more than 50% of
It's 26% of that total development site.
Is that calculation based on property line to property line?
Uh huh.
Then when I just look at that graphic, I don't know if you have that, it just, something just doesn't seem to be adding up. I believe your figure said it at less than 25%, right?
It's 26%.
26, okay, so roughly a quarter.
Correct. I've run the number several times. It's 20% of the total, or 26% of the total area.
The area in those, those six residential properties is less than, is 26% of that other large?
26% of the total site area.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Planner Teague?
I just read what Sue Lee was saying. I had the same questions about where the 50% came from. And, you know, so if we go lower than that, we can't go lower than 26%, obviously, because that defeats why we're doing this. And I guess I'm a little concerned too about the, being able to continue, but I can't think where this has been done before in another city where you can go out and compare and see where they're done, so.
I'm not aware of another city that prohibits
Right.
property from being just considered
Exactly.
for rezoning. There's some question about the, about that as well.
Most PUDs, they allow every, everything in the city, correct, to be potentially rezoned. This is, seems to me kind of an exception to that, right?
Yeah, we're, we are unique with this, with this regulation, yes.
Gotcha. Commissioner Shear?
I was here for the earlier discussion four years ago, but remind me, R1 properties being excluded from PUD, what's the standard, or what is the usual? Is there a usual?
The usual is that any property can be proposed for rezoning, whether it's PUD, another commercial designation. I'm not aware of any other city that actually prohibits something from being considered for rezoning.
I mean, just to think about it, someone could come in and apply to rezone everything next to a single-family to industrial. Not that you would seriously consider it, but they could apply for it, and that's, this would allow them to just apply.
And they could apply as either a rezoning or a PUD, wouldn't they?
Well, they could, right now, you could apply, now going through a separate step, to rezone all the property in the city of Edina to industrial.
Right.
You wouldn't have to rezon it to something else than the PUD. This is the only thing where This is the only thing where you have that kind of prohibition. And I've worked in quite a few cities and I've never seen it anywhere.
You've never seen that the R1 was excluded previously?
No, I mean, because you can rezon anything to anything if you want to, and it's consistent with the comp plan, but there's, this is very unique.
Okay, that was my question. It is unique in your experience.
Very.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Thank you, Carrie.
Next up would be the public hearing section on this, and I will caution, this is specifically about this ordinance. Last week, there was a discussion on this property at the City Council that was approved by, or voted for on by the City Council. So please make your comments relevant to this particular ordinance. Again, people have three minutes if they want to speak. And watch the lights there, the green's on, the yellow, you have about 30 seconds, and red, please, please be done. So if you'd come forth, state your name and address.
Good evening, Debbie Gottel. My address is 6700 Portland Avenue South. I'm the mayor of Richfield, commissioner and chair. I want to thank you for your thoughtful process last time I was here to visit you, and I appreciate your comments regarding Richfield. I'm only against the PUD and the application because across the street are residential houses as well, and they would be highly impacted by the six stories. And that would be my reason for not supporting something like this because of what it will do to our city. And I'm back here to say that this was the official stand last time, it's still the official stand. You've seen letters before you several times now, and I was at the other meetings as well, but this impacts us highly. And I know that you asked Lennar to do something different, and they've worked on this, but we still consider this to be too large and out of scope.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Carol Lansing. I'm an attorney at Fegre Baker Daniels. Lennar Multifamily Communities is a client of our firm, and Peter Shmudski was not able to be here tonight, and he asked me to make a couple of comments addressing the proposed ordinance amendment. Planning staff is proposing this amendment at this time because of issues raised with the Lennar project, but this amendment is consistent with your existing comprehensive plan policies and should be supported on that basis. First, when you look at the purpose of PUD zoning, it is to allow you to have flexibility and creativity in how you address site design and planning. The current prohibition that you have, you have heard is quite unique, and it unnecessarily limits your flexibility in dealing with redevelopment and shaping redevelopment in the city. The, another area that I'd like to bring your attention to is that most of these areas that are potentially impacted have already been identified in your comprehensive plan as areas of potential change, areas that may or are suitable for increasing housing and job growth in the city. So, you know, there may be another situation brought to you in one of these other areas where, like the Lennar site, it is critical for you to achieve the redevelopment that you want in the city by being able to incorporate some residential or low-density lots. And you should be assured, as Carrie Teague told you, that this amendment does not remove any control you have over the ability of a property to be rezoned as a PUD. A PUD is a rezoning, it's a highly legislative discretionary policy decision that the city makes. And in order to be rezoned PUD, the rezoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So either consistent with existing comprehensive plan policies, or if you consider an amendment, consistent with that amendment. Again, amendments of the comp plan are highly discretionary policy decisions. So this amendment simply gives you the authority and the tools to evaluate proposals on their merits. It does not dictate what the outcome of a rezoning application would be. As a final note, as you pointed out, tonight's vote is not a vote to approve the Lennar project specifically. That project has to continue through the normal course of rezoning hearings and reviews. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Fran Peterson, and I live at 6912 Washburn Avenue South. I, my property kind of adjoins the Edina-Richfield line, and I just wanted to make a comment about, you know, the people that are left behind. If you're, you know, Richfield resident, and as our mayor pointed out, you know, the people that are going to be greatly impacted. And I guess as someone who has invested, you know, a lot of money, neighbors of mine invested a lot of money refurbishing, and I moved in in 88, and it was kind of a starter home, and...
So are you speaking for the amendment, the ordinance we're speaking of here today?
The six-story. I'm speaking against it.
That's not what we're discussing here, it's the zoning ordinance amendment for a PUD.
Okay, so we have nothing to say about the project?
This, if you have something to say about the zoning ordinance amendment, we'll hear from you, but this is, it's a change to our PUD, this is not about the Lennar project that you speak of.
Okay, all right, well, I misunderstood.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, I'm Steve Schwab. I live at 6740 Washburn, which is near the Lennar site, which we're not talking about. The first question I have is, as the attorney said, she says that there's still planning and zoning going on with Lennar site. How, how does that work? And I know from speaking at the City Council, you guys can't say anything to me, you know, you can't answer my question, am I correct?
We can talk to our planner, and if you're asking the process, we can certainly speak to that.
Yeah, the process and also another, just like a tangible, when did the signs go up in Edina that there was going to be hearings on it? Do we know?
I can talk about the process and the signs. The rezoning process in Edina, it's a two-step process. Preliminary zoning is the first, and along with that preliminary rezoning was a comprehensive plan amendment. That's a one-step process, so that was a final action. The preliminary rezoning that was recommended, or was approved by the City Council allows them now to come forward with a final rezoning application. That application has been made. A public hearing is scheduled for the Planning Commission on May 28th and the City Council on June 17th. And the signs were required to go up 10 days prior to the first public hearing that was held by the Planning Commission.
And that was on, because I saw that you guys, and I'm happy, you guys denied it originally, and that was on the 11th, and I didn't know that there were signs up before, I don't think that there were signs up before that. Am I right or wrong?
I believe the signs were up.
Okay, that, well, we can figure that out. And so, we're not going to talk about this specific project. I'm just wondering, you know, when I came last week to the City Council meeting, I kind of felt like this had already gone all the way down the track, and so I'm wondering who you want me to talk to or how you want me to do this, you know, going forward? Because there's a lot of things that don't make sense about this development for people of Richfield, and, you know, here's a good example that will be affecting you with the other properties that you'll have going forward. Lennar didn't want, couldn't move the density forward because they wanted...
Can you speak specifically to the ordinance we were discussing here?
Okay, in this ordinance, you'll have a developer that hypothetically comes to you and says, "I want to do this with my property." You say, "We can't do this," you say, "This is how we want it to look." The developer says, "I can't, I can't do it that way because of parking issues." And then what ends up happening is you guys reach an agreement, and, I mean, if I can't address the thing, I don't know. I mean, build a bunch of buildings, I mean...
As Planner Teague mentioned, the next, it's coming back for the final on May 28th before here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I come here or I come to the City Council to talk?
You can come to either one. Here, it's the 28th, it's coming before us, and then it comes back, and then it's scheduled to go to the City Council on what the, you said the...
June 17th.
June the 17th.
Okay.
So either of those times, you could come back and talk about that project. And they're both public hearings.
Okay, and we can talk about the Lennar thing. I mean, I'm...
On those dates when it's on our agenda.
Okay, that's fine. And thanks for your hard work in trying to figure this out, and I'm not trying to, you know, be a pain in the butt, but I live there, so, thanks for your time.
Thanks for your testimony.
Chair, before he leaves, I had a question, but can we tab that discourse or no at this point? Because it's just comments, right?
Well, it's part of the public hearing.
Okay.
Come forth, name and address, please.
I'm Lisa Schwab, I belong to him. I'm at 6740 Washburn.
It's a bold statement.
Oh, no, it's, it's true. One of the things that I was concerned with this rezoning is in looking at your map of Edina and in what other properties that it could affect. In, a lot of our friends live in those areas, and I kind of told them about it, and they felt very blindsided by what was happening, just the changes. Very similar to what, and it was kind of how we felt when we saw the signs go up, it's kind of the same kind of deal, is they were upset just seeing their properties highlighted or circled as potential, you know, could be affected by this. And one of the things is, we did talk to the residents that are left behind on Xerxes, the Edina residents, that you will leave four homes there. Now, I don't know the answer, and you don't have to answer me now, but I'm not sure if those four will be included in this rezoning, or if they're just rezoning the five, I don't, I'm not sure how that works. It didn't make a lot of sense to me when I was looking at the map. But they, the rezoning of their neighbors next to them has left them fearful of their own homes, has left, you know, a lot of them are fearful of that the whole, because you rezone these five, it'll be very easy to rezon those four, especially that we have an empty Best Buy building sitting at the corner, and we have, you know, other buildings that are older and could potentially be snatched up by a developer that wants to come in and kind of, hey, this, this is a blighted area, this is an old area, this needs to be redeveloped. You know, Southdale Circle is a weird area, you know, there's a lot of potentials where all of a sudden, you're taking these five homes and kind of redeveloping that area. What's going to stop it from getting those other four? And in talking, a lot of the residents are unsure of where they can even do anything, you know, what, you know, we feel our hands are tied because we live in Richfield, so we get, that we only get to talk to you guys. But you also have to understand that a lot of your Edina residents are just, are befuddled and kind of beside themselves about what's happening. And nobody was really concerned until I showed them the map overall of all the areas.
If you could wrap up pretty quick, thank you.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to let you know that it is, it is a big concern, not just, you know, this development right here, but a developer can come in at any moment once you, even once you change these, you know, this isn't even changed. Once you change these, it'll be much easier for developers to come in and kind of grab other single-family homes around Edina. So I just want to let you know that. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else? All right, with that, I take a motion to close the public hearing. Do you hear a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So bring this back up here, if anyone wants to, his comments, start the discussion. I did hear maybe just a couple of questions for Planner Teague as far as last person's comments on these areas, specifically about the homes by the Best Buy there. So there are one right now, there's no, the plan is to change them, but this would, is it on that, on your map for those homes?
They were on the map. This ordinance would allow them to be considered for a PUD ordinance, should, say, the Best Buy come in and want to apply for a PUD. Now, the Best Buy site is zoned PCD III. They could come in, purchase those three homes, and request a rezoning of that property from, to PCD III.
So they wouldn't necessarily have to use a PUD?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Regardless of what's decided tonight, they still could be, and the same goes for all of those other properties that are adjacent to commercial property. They could still be purchased by a developer and come in and requested for a rezoning, for an expansion of that zoning district that's next to them. So whether it's PCD II or PCD I, they could make that request to that district. This ordinance just allows them to apply for a PUD rezoning.
I also understand that all these areas are noted in the comprehensive plan right now as potential areas of change, so that...
That's correct.
That out there is, is public record to what could be changed right now.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Shear, sorry.
All that being said, I guess I would like to go on record as saying that I, I had a similar response to, is it Mrs. Schwab? As you look at a map and you see proposed residential areas identified, it does seem to encourage, or at least not discourage, the idea of looking at adjacent properties that are near current small commercial nodes or other medium-density housing to be included. And I personally am, I would have to say, I'd like to on record as saying, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, despite our plan, I would not necessarily suggest that that plan, even though we're looking at potential redevelopment in those areas, should encourage encroachment into R1 territory as part of that redevelopment plan. You know, when I looked at our comprehensive plan and agreed that these were areas that we could study in small-area plans, that we could look at for further development or change, I did not have as part of my thought process that we would be expanding those areas by taking up other R1 property that's adjacent. And I drove every one of those properties today. There are a number of smaller homes adjacent to those properties that I personally would not be in favor of seeing a developer start purchasing those and pushing further into the neighborhoods. I don't think it would be appropriate, and I don't think it would be well-received. So I don't know that that has much to do with what we're considering tonight, but I would like to go on record as saying that I wouldn't want to encourage the situation that's going on here with Lennar's development spreading into other areas of town. That would not be appealing to me at all.
Commissioner Lee.
I have to agree with Commissioner Shear. I think that issue of creep is what we are trying to formalize into looking at this wording for this amendment, and I have a hard time even landing on a percentage. I mean, in some ways, it almost felt better to say it should be a larger percentage, you know, it's almost like, well, what's the point of saying I can take one house at a time? Well, maybe it should be put in there that it should be 75%, and then it would be less likely that a developer could buy out five, 10 houses to make up 75% of his parcel. So I just don't know that that's really been completely thought through, and so to land on a percentage even would be difficult for me to do. I do, I do think there is some issue of creep that we're addressing. I think the reason Edina had it, and the R1 restriction shall be adhered to, is because it's primarily a residential community. And we did have these pockets, we do have these pockets that are, have the potential for change, but I think the sense was, it was to give some flexibility on how that would be dictated, not, not that it would be the seed for something that would grow and expand and become something else entirely, so...
Yes, Commissioner.
Well, I think if we were to lean in favor of this amendment, I think we should definitely reduce the percentage to maybe 30 or 20% just because, looking at this, if these five lots are already 26%, well, that fact is really overwhelming because it looks like it should... well, that fact is really overwhelming because it looks like it should be way more than that. So that's why I think it should be, you know, maybe even less than this, because I still think that this is a lot. So maybe like 20 or less, but, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Forrest.
I concur with my fellow commissioners about the concern of how we're looking at these neighborhoods as areas of potential change and that we need to keep in mind as we go forward and maybe as we go into the next comp plan cycle too, to, if we, you know, the powers that be at the time, I won't be on this commission at the time, really carefully look at this further as to how they identify these properties in the comp plan. Is it by, are they outlined in there just as intersections or are they identified as, in other words, the commercial properties and the surrounding neighborhoods, or is it just the commercial and higher-density properties that are identified in there? And also that we really pay attention to the concept of having transitions from the commercial to the residential areas, that they're transitional properties with, as to height and density, traffic and all of those things, so that, so that overall, we're looking at the livability of these neighborhoods and we aren't detracting. We're trying to augment the community and not necessarily detract from the residential.
Yes.
I think for me that overall, I've seen the PUD process work very well in all the redevelopment that has come through us as a city. It gives a lot of options for us to have requirements to the developer and for the developer to have conversations with us. It's a lot of give and take. And I feel like that this specific amendment that we're looking at tonight gives us the option to say yes, instead of legally binding us to always just say no, which is what we kind of currently have. So I feel like it's not necessarily a bad thing to have this option for a developer to say, you know, I don't want to rezone this as another PCD III, or, which they can already do. I mean, and maybe that's not what we want transitionally or anything. If they did that and we approved it, you know, it could expand even more if they came with the PUD and we said, you know what, we want the height in these properties lower. And that could be a condition that we can impose with the PUD. So I think that overall, just the proposal tonight gives us that option to say yes, which I would be in favor for.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi, my comment is just that, I give that 50% and I kind of, you know, if we get another development where, you know, it's 55, then we come back and say, okay, we want to amend it again for 55%. I guess it's just, it's feeling a little piecemeal and reactive, so I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just, that's my concern. And Roger, you were saying that there were certain areas that could already just rezone. Are those, or Carrie, are those, all of them that you have highlighted here, could, other than the Lennar piece, this property, could they all kind of be rezoned into like commercial or do the same thing?
Any property in the city can be requested for rezoning.
And the only one that we have the restriction is?
Is PUD.
PUD.
Which gives us the most flexibility in our review capability.
And the only one that's restricted for PUD, again, is the R1, okay.
A unique ordinance.
Yeah, so I don't want to open that all up, but I just, again, I can feel it's a little, we might be doing this again in another year or so, but who knows?
Hopefully not. Commissioner Shear.
I guess I'd like to hear, we've heard from a couple of my fellow commissioners, but I too am concerned about the 50%. That seems a bit extreme to me, especially given my concerns about encroachment. And I'd be curious to know from either staff or other commissioners, what anybody sees as a more reasonable number.
My head was around 30% and I think I've heard that a few times here, so that's, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Okay.
You know, just overall on this, I think it's, again, getting back to the PUD process, I think that's been absolutely phenomenal for this city to be able to use that piece. We've, as commissioners, as mentioned here, it's, it allows us to bring in a developer, especially through our sketch plan review and look at what they're, you know, that give and take back and forth and understand what they're looking for, what the city's looking for versus going through this. I think, I think this piece is essentially just a minor or another little step in that piece as far as these residen, residentials. As we mentioned before, all this comes forth, as a PUD, we don't have to grant anything, they can make the request, but we're still that, part of that discussion. This just allows, in my mind, a little more flexibility in some cases. And it allows them where they might go to rezone, which does not allow us flexibility, yet with the PUD, we have that flexibility if the residential is included. Before this, we wouldn't have that, then they may rezone to a PCD III where we don't have a lot of input into that piece. So I guess my point is, I would come out in favor for this, just subject to the 30% as we've, we've talked before.
You would go in favor if it was 30?
Yes. Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I know, we're new to this. And we weren't here when you discussed not allowing it for the single-family R1. But if you did allow, what was the reason for that? I mean, because what you just said is that the PUD does allow you that control and were you not afraid of, or was it-
Unfortunately, I wasn't here either, so.
Oh, you weren't here either, so.
Carrie, maybe you want to speak to that item?
Yeah, part of it was, the PUD was a new concept for us. It was kind of the unknown and we didn't want to roll out an ordinance that impacted the entire city. So that was really the basis for that.
So I guess my follow-up comment would be-
It's only four years old, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's been working its way through the system.
But, so if it is working well, which I agree, I think PUDs are a good thing, would, I don't know, I'm going opposite whatever other one else is saying, but would you consider just starting to allow PUDs in R1? Or, you know, just do it. But that might be, that's my comment. Not just piecemeal and-
Sure.
React to each proposal.
Commissioner Lee.
I, I think that's really the issue. I think that's really the issue, that we have to look at that and say, why, why is the R1 there? If you take it off, then now we don't have these little pockets. Nobody understands it as specifically little pockets that are at risk. It's just like any other property in the city. So after 24 years, maybe that's the conclusion. I don't know what that means in terms of our, you know, approving this amendment. I am just really wary of that percentage issue. I don't have a good basis for that, you know, other than just a gut feeling and that doesn't seem like the right approach. I think Joanna's right, that we'll be looking at another project and trying to figure out what percentage that is and what should it be.
Anyone else? Does anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Shear.
Well, that's an interesting comment. Just to reflect on that for a minute, I was moving south towards the 30%. Do appreciate, obviously, some, I've been here long enough for the whole four years to see some of the incredible responses that we've gotten to developers as we've gone through the PUD process and improved significantly, I think, on some original development plans. And some have gone through a lot of iterations to get there, but it has worked out. There is an, it is an interesting concept to think that, that if you simply don't signal, set aside R1s, you also haven't identified unique little places for builders to go, you know, try to move into a neighborhood. That's an interesting concept. I'm trying to think about that pretty quickly here.
Yes.
Well, I wasn't here when, you know, a lot of this took place, but I was just wondering, have there been any positive feedback from the residents who have been affected by this or were nearby?
If you have any comments, Carrie.
I have, I haven't heard it.
As far as a PUD, that's, it hasn't-
I haven't. You know, we've had the, you recall the Waters project when that came through and we did not have a PUD.
I was also not here for that, so. Keep, keep going, keep going.
And I think some of the sentiment on the planning commission was, had we had the PUD, maybe we could have got a better development out of that, through the give and take, rather than just using standard zoning.
Because that was basically a rezone to what the standards were, right?
Correct.
You didn't have any options to, there wasn't a sketch plan, there wasn't all those pieces to go through, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would state that the city council, when it reached them, operated a little bit in a PUD mode, even though we didn't have it, in terms of lopping off a story or two of the building and making other adjustments in terms of its layout on the property, which I think improved it immensely, all of which could have been discussed and dealt with in a more proper PUD sort of a format.
Similar, don't we have now?
Right.
The sketch plan approval, yeah.
Right.
Thanks. Commissioner Kilburg.
I, again, I think that just, we are not harming anyone with the percentages, I feel like. I feel like since every project has to come in front of the commission anyway, it's, we can say no if we feel that a 1% encroachment into residential is too much, in a specific case. If we look at a Grandview project and say, we don't want commercial sprawl happening here, we can say, well, of course not. And we're not legally bound to say yes or we're not legally bound to say no, and that's kind of what the option is. So I feel like I'm still kind of just, I don't care about the percent, I guess. I can say that. I mean, it's because it has to come in front of the commission anyway, why not open it up into R1? And I feel, I do feel the, kind of the hesitation that, oh, that's opening it up too much. But, I mean, if we're struggling with a percentage, we can look at it case by case, which we have to do anyway. So that's just kind of my feelings on it.
Commissioner Forrest.
Planner Teague, I was just wondering, we've identified these neighborhoods on this map, these particular areas of the town, but basically what we're talking about when we open it up is you could do a PUD on any block in the city, right?
That's correct.
And again, I'm wondering how much weight the comp plan would have over that, but that's for the powers that be at the time. So, you know, it's any larger property, church properties, whatever, you know, there are a lot of places. It's not just these areas on the map that could be impacted. So as long as we're aware of, aware of that, I mean, it's-
But they could also be impacted now. I mean, anyone could apply to change it right now.
They can apply, right. But right now, in our comp plan, those are not identified as areas that are planned to be industrial or planned to be commercial. They're, in the comp plan, they're planning for them to be residential. Now, we do tend to amend our comp plan when things come before us that we, you know, change is perceived as needed. But I, I guess it's, it's just, I think a lot of this got started, the ban against it in R1s because the, when the comp plan, or when this PUD thing was coming before us, there were people who were concerned that residents would be a little bit leery of it if it went into the R1 properties as well. So it's, you know, it is, it can be a very useful tool as well, so. But just so we realize, it's not just these areas, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, if I could comment on the, the comprehensive plan still would be an extremely important tool if someone were to request a PUD in an R1 district. The maximum density established there is between one and four units an acre, so it's still that, essentially the minimum lot size. If they, if somebody wanted to do a PUD with a density greater, that would kick it into a comprehensive plan amendment, just like any other, a rezoning to another higher-density district.
Commissioner Forrest.
I was wondering then, are there different requirements then for comp plan amendments versus other motions at the council level that could be made clear and just so that people understand?
Yes, anytime a comprehensive plan amendment is required, it becomes a four-fifths vote of the city council for approval, rather than a three-fifths vote.
So it is a higher standard because that is a much greater change potentially at that point?
Well, and also, we can note too, that in our comp plan, we also identify height overlay districts currently, I believe. So those things should, would also be considered, hopefully, if a PUD proposal came before.
I would say it seems we have every time. When the PUDs have come forth, we look at what the standards in that area are, definitely, at least since I've been here. Are there any motions out there?
Well, could we get some clarification on what's, what's the options for the motions? Is it literally just to approve or not approve? What if we want to reexamine that R1 clause? Yeah, or, or set a, set a different percentage? What are the choices here available for us right now?
Yeah, you could, you could set a different percentage, make a recommendation for a different percentage. You could make a recommendation to strike that and allow PUDs to be considered citywide, if you so chose.
And that would mean, in our current zoning, again, it would be a zoning amendment to strike the R1 from that?
It would. It would be the ordinance in front of you, it would be simply strike that last sentence that says, property currently zoned R1, R2, PRD 1 shall not be eligible for a PUD. It would just simply be striking that sentence.
Commissioner Kilburg.
So basically, if we did that, that would give the city more flexibility. Because today, if I wanted to build, buy my entire block and build an apartment building, I'd have to rezone it. And if I did that, now I could come and ask for a PUD and the city could give me more limitations, right? So it's kind of a better thing for the city to just allow it? That's kind of where I'm going. I, I feel like it's better for the city to have that PUD option than just say, I want to rezone it.
Gives us another tool.
Yeah.
Another rezoning tool.
The public hearing on this, though, was, was kind of specific. Can we make that big of a change? Do we have to kind of go back out and re-notify? Are we okay, Planner Teague?
If this is accurate, it says, the notice was for PUD applicability in the R1, R2, and PRD 1 districts. That open-ended, so.
It's not open, or is it?
It is open-ended.
Oh, okay, okay.
So if you chose to, you could, you could recommend approval with the 50% or you could, a different percent, or you could say, we don't recommend any change, or you could say, just drop that last sentence in the current, and allow PUD to be anywhere.
Yeah. Well, I'd, I'd like to make that last motion, to drop that. I'd like to move that we amend the zoning ordinance by taking out that last sentence and opening it up.
Is there a second?
Can I just clarify that? So what you want to strike out is the language, property currently zoned R1, R2, and PRD-1 shall not be eligible for a PUD. Is that correct? That's the language we're talking about striking. So in fact, what it will now read is, all permitted uses, permitted accessory uses, conditional uses, and uses allowed by administrative permit contained in the various zoning districts as defined in this chapter shall be treated as potentially allowable uses within a PUD district, provided they would be allowable on the site under the comprehensive plan.
Is there a second? Is there a second to that?
I make a second on that.
Further discussion?
I just had a question to clarify. So if we were to strike that last sentence, would that make it like a case by case? And so just no limitations with the percentage?
Yeah, I, I think what I want to say here is that, what we're, what I'm trying to, I think what we're trying to say is that we, we don't like the idea that we're flagging certain, certain areas as being treated differently from any other place. In some ways, it's counterintuitive, but by the way the zoning works is, it, this way, it makes every property equally treated under the zoning ordinance. And in some ways, I think that's a better model. It doesn't, it doesn't give a developer that idea that I'm going to start looking at what's 25, 40, 30% and how many houses does that constitute? And literally, the fact that we're all aware that this could happen anywhere- And literally, the fact that we're all aware that this could happen anywhere makes us more on guard about, oh, okay, so we, it's not as if we identified specific pockets that we think this might spring up in the future. It can spring up anywhere. And so most likely, obviously, we understand this as being a residential community, it's something that we're going to look at very carefully, because we understand that, that it's, it's about the residential areas. So that's more the reason for clarifying it in this direction, rather than trying to make an amendment to something where we've excluded R1.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any other discussion before, I think we should have probably have a roll vote here? So when you're, you're voting, just to hear me out, you're voting, you're voting, if you're voting for this, you're voting to remove the R1, R2, PRD from any limitations on our PUD, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Jackie, if you want to do a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Shear?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Forrest?
Aye.
Acting Chair Platter?
Nay. Motion carries four to one. That was an interesting discussion. Thank you. Next up, correspondence and petitions. Attendants, council update. Thank you, everyone. Any concerns on the attendants? I would say Chair Staunton has now missed two in a row. And I'm sure hope he comes back next time. Any chair or commission comments?
I have one comment. I'm not sure that's the same comment that you were planning on addressing. I just wanted to state that I had attended a, as a result of this invitation that we received from the Minnesota Extension, there was a water resources presentation that I attended, and a couple of the City of Edina council members. It was an excellent workshop. It was a workshop for elected and appointed officials about the connection between land use decisions to water resources. So obviously, that's what we do here, land use decisions, particularly in our community, because it was addressing stormwater runoff. And the timing of when Edina developed, obviously, that was not so much a concept that was actively pursued, other than stormwater runoff as a place for the water to just go. So I just wanted to say that it was a very good presentation. There is going to be some follow-up workshops, and I'd encourage anyone on this commission to attend, because I think it has sensitized me to those issues as they come up in some of the zoning variances that we've asked, or been asked to consider. So that's, I think, a further, a future, I just wanted to put another date out there. This summer, they're going to have an on-the-water workshop, which is really nice, although I believe we actually have a Planning Commission meeting scheduled. It's for July 23 on Lake Minnetonka. So it'll be in the evening, but it sounds like fun.
They could have a meeting out there.
I think we have a meeting.
It's, they're calling it a cruise. 5:30 PM, the cruise departs, and 9:00 PM, it returns.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Any other comments? Commissioner Forrest.
I just wanted to let people know that things are going forward with the small area plan process for Valley View and Wooddale area. And Commissioner Lee and I have been working with the Assistant City Manager Karen Kurt, and we are anticipating a public kickoff meeting, in other words, an informational meeting, to start the process in mid-June. And we will be coming back, I believe, at our next Planning Commission meeting with the charter, or in other words, the plan of attack that we're going to be using for the process. And there will be more details to follow, and certainly, I'm sure the city website will have a lot of information on it as we move forward. And we will be seeking community input from residences, businesses, everybody.
Great, that sounds like a very interesting project and something to get our, get our arms around here, too. I just have one comment. The, at the council meeting last week presented the tree ordinance. It was, actually ended up, a lot of discussion, good discussion, a lot of comments, as most things are. And what, what happened was that was actually continued until, or actually pushed out to a, I believe, the early August work session with the council. So we'll, we'll have that and hopefully hammer out something that we can go forth with. So keep that in mind. I don't know if that'd be, I assume it'd be for the full Planning Commission to be there, how would, how would that work?
Yeah, I think so. I, I believe the, the task force was specifically invited, but this is something that the, the commission as a whole made recommendation on. It's August 4th is the tentative date that's been scheduled for the work session.
Would there be other things for us to, I mean, I don't know what's scheduled for that work session, but would there be anything else from the Planning Commission to discuss with them on that date, as long as we have that audience?
We could.
Just curious, I don't, you know, I don't know how long the tree will last, trees will last, but.
Yeah, Assistant City Manager Kurt kind of is the controller, she schedules all the work sessions, so I'm not sure if there's been a second. Oftentimes, it's divided into two sections. We can try to reserve that full two hours if there, I'm sure we could fill it up.
Does that, does that make sense for everyone? I mean, it'd be a couple, couple things, and, you know, talking through things we just discussed, for example, would be, be interesting also. I, I don't have, you know, specific things on the agenda, but it seems we have enough going on and enough changes that it, it might be a good time to just touch base a little bit there.
I'll put in that request.
You know, unless, unless there's obviously, unless there's something that, you know, else, but just, I'm throwing that out there right now.
I'll put that request out.
Okay. Any other comments?
As a follow-up, what you were just saying, I was just reading over the minutes where Commissioner Carr was talking about the work plan, and is that what you were just talking about? That might have been.
Partially, we have certain work sessions with the council throughout the year. This one is requested in specific to the tree ordinance.
Okay.
But if there's other things going on also, of course, with a lot of interactions and PUDs and particular projects, or, you know, what, there might be some more discussions to be had there in a working session. Those are all, they're public, they're open to the public, so.
Just, just to follow up on that work plan, so is there a work plan? Is that what she was referring to? Do we have a work plan, and we're just going to?
We have a work plan for 2014, and I'd love to get that to you if you, if you haven't got a copy yet. Things that were on there, for example, was the Valley View, small area plan, the tree ordinance, and I believe there's like parking lot items or lighting, I think, were on there. I don't remember exactly, but.
Yeah, there's, there's other zoning ordinance type amendments that are on there.
Yeah. Last year, we had a work plan, and it ended up being all residential, is what it ended up being.
Okay.
So it can be taken over, depending what, what comes along.
Yeah, our, our work plan is a little bit unique to other commissions, because our workload is generated by the applications that, that come in. So sometimes that limits our time to work on ordinances, do small area plans, those kind of things, but we're moving ahead to try to tackle as many as we can.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Any staff comments?
Also, just wanted to note from the last City Council meeting, that the council did approve the Taco Bell, as recommended by the Planning Commission, and the Lennar project was also approved. And they want to mention, you recall the Planning Commission had recommended that it be shifted 18 feet over. Ultimately, the, the recommendation was for denial, but within that discussion, they, they really tried to work at addressing some of your concerns. They shifted the building 10 feet to the west, rather than eliminating some of the parking that was suggested to be eliminated on the York side, they took that 10 feet out of the building, made the retail a little bit smaller. And they also, up on the sixth story, rather than having it go straight up, they took out two pieces, essentially in the corners, to try to soften that, give a little more architectural appeal to that side. Relief to that side on Xerxes as well. So while they didn't go all the way as to where the Planning Commission was recommending, they, they did do a nice job of amending the plan.
So both the, the comp plan amendment was approved, and then also the site plan for that, right?
Correct. Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, they'll be coming back for their final rezonings at your next meeting.
Looking forward to it. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Interesting evening again.